For the Pledge of Allegiance. So, welcome to the 2025 school budget hearing. I'd like to ask Don Keegan to give us a rundown of our proposed school budget and our additional propositions.
And our fund balance and reserves. And then we'll tell you a little bit about, we have a special referendum this year on a capital project. And then we've got the Salina Library information in here and vote and election information. But I want to start out, if it's okay, and have Dr. Ward talk a little bit about a few highlights.
Thank you. Thank you, Don. So, one of the things that we, we really try to do is, one of the things we want to let you know is we really start our budgeting. It's pretty much an all-year-round process, but for us specifically, it's December when we start reviewing, you know, our expenditures and thinking about next year really well. So, when we start that process, we, we start the same every year, which is we reflect on our strategic plan. Why, why are we here as a school district? We're here to serve kids. So, the three pieces in our strategic plan currently are focusing on improving our graduation rates, our reading, increasing our reading proficiency, and certainly coming off COVID is improving emotional competency. So, those are the three driving factors in every conversation that we have about our school budget. So, thank you, and I'm going to turn this over to Don.
Couple, couple other things just to, to mention that, you know, we've had a challenging budget season this year. Act of inflation, you folks know, we're at four years. Bargaining with the loss of COVID funding, we're transitioning levels to more reasonable levels, and we've had to tighten our belts a little bit. We've got a little bit of our state aid. That has a bit to do with the funding enrollment that we've experienced, therefore the related declining aid. One, couple of things I want to mention, you know, we've got 12 bargaining units, but the good news is, I mean, they've all been figured into rises around contract negotiations. And I also want to mention in the environment we're in right now, we receive about $10 million of federal funding. This budget does not contemplate the loss of any of that federal funding. So, about three and a half million dollars of that 10 million. Our, so, a number of these programs are being looked at at federal government level. And in budget, we've not contemplated losing any of that funding. And so, it's a bit of a risk as we head into next year, how that'll all play out, but we'll keep an eye on that. Throughout this presentation, some pictures of our kids, because that's what this budget is all about, is about providing opportunities for our children. We've got a lot of success here at North Syracuse that we're proud of, and you'll see some of those pictures as we, as we. Mentioned inflation, they actually today, inflation numbers were announced through April, and it was for the last 12 months, 2.3%. That's actually good news. We're coming off of, and if you remember, we had inflation of 4.7% in '22. '24, we had 4.1%. So, to have, to get back to that 2% level is really good news. Those are the levels that the Fed is looking for. Back to normal levels of inflation. However, for the last four years, you know, we've had to absorb that inflation. Remember that the way our budgets work, we can only pass 2% of inflation onto the taxpayers. So, we've had to kind of eat that difference and, and tighten our belts a little bit. So, looking at our revenues, we've got a budget here of about $224 million. About an $11.8 million increase over last year, or about 5.59%. That number might feel a little shocking, right? 5.59% increase. But I want to draw your attention to our, the building aid number. Our budget is our capital projects. And so, a large portion of our spending and revenue increased relating. Those are highly addable, so we've gotten state aid for those. And that's, that's something I just want to make sure you're aware of. I'm going to talk more about the tax levy in detail. I mentioned that state aid number, we got about a 3.25% increase since April. And I'll go into detail on a few of the other numbers as we proceed. I like this chart because it, it shows you where our revenues come from. 41% of our revenues come from general state aid. Live and die by our tax levy and our state aid, the biggest components of revenue for the district. Tax cap, when we think about raise, property taxes and school taxes that people pay, they're governed by a thing called the tax cap calculation. And so, follow a state mandated calculation that tells us how much we should levy in terms of. And I want to draw your attention to that middle line that says allowable levy growth factor. That's inflation. And so, the, the way the rules work is it's 2% or inflation, whichever is less. And that's the primary driver. Now, you might say, well, Don, there's a lot of numbers on there, and our tax levy is going up 2.91%. Why is that? Well, the biggest impact is our capital projects. So, voters vote on capital projects, whether it be the renovations that are going on now at Lakeshore, or the air conditioning project and auditorium and gym projects at the high school. When the voters vote on those, they authorize us to increase taxes a little bit. So, until those projects are fully paid for, that tax increase is included. One thing that I think is nice for our taxpayers is, the minute we pay off the debt for that project, the tax levy goes down. We can't keep taxing you on the Lakeshore renovation for the rest of your life. We're gonna, that's a 15-year project, we're gonna pay for it over 15 years, and then we're. So, for next year, we're looking at a tax levy increase of 2.9. And I also want to mention that you, we've all heard about Micron, and when Micron comes into town, they're gonna get a pilot agreement, that's called a. But what that basically means is, it won't pay school taxes like everybody else. That they're, they'll have a special arrangement, it's arranged through the Industrial Development Agency, that will agree on an amount of money that they'll pay. And what's interesting about the way pilots flow through our tax cap calculation, that say, for example, Micron's pilot, pilot ends up being a million dollars. We will actually lower everybody's taxes by a million dollars because we're getting a million dollars from Micron. So, that's something to look forward to in future years, that when Micron pays their pilot agreement, it will, it will actually have a positive impact for the local taxpayer. Now, we, and we thought there'd be a pilot agreement in place for Micron this year, but there isn't one in place yet. They'll anticipate that that probably will be in place for next year, so we'll look, look forward to that. But I wanted you to know that Micron's not affecting the tax levy at all for the '25, '26 school year. What does it mean to each of the towns? So, when we think about our school taxes, there are three towns that are impacted, the town of Cicero, the town of Clay, and the town of Salina. Now, one thing to note, the school district doesn't have anything to do with tax levies. We are tax assessments, you're the assessment of your property, we don't have anything to do with that. So, as you might know, each town has a assessed value for their houses, and they're independently assessed. And I'll just show you an example here, a, a house in Cicero that's assessed for $70,500 as a, is equalized, so that they pay the same amount of taxes. That $100,000 house is going to pay the same amount of taxes as a house in Clay that doesn't have a full value, that's only valued at $2,750, or a house in Salina that's valued at $81,000. And so, what the state does is it equalizes those assessments, so that it's fair across the three towns. So, if you live in a $100,000 home, that's a full value, $100,000, roughly what maybe you could sell that home for today. Regardless of what the assessment is, you're going to pay the same amount of taxes regardless of the town you're in. That's about $1,851. It's a $52 increase, or $52.88 increase over '24, '25, or about $4.40 more per month. I want to dive into a few of our expenditures. So, one of the things that we, that we spend a lot of money on is health benefits for our employees. And I want to say, I'm particularly proud of the process that North Syracuse did. We're self-insured, so that means we pay all of our claims. And you might say, wow, there's no insurance. Well, the way it works is because we have so many employees, we able to be self-insured, and implemented some strategies that keep our costs relatively low. One of them is, is our employees are forced to use mail-order drugs. They're encouraged, strongly encouraged, and we have a very high percentage of employees that use generic. So, mail-order and generic are much less expensive. But we've done an excellent job, we have our retirees on a Medicare Advantage plan, and they use, we use strategies to maximize the Medicare subsidy that goes into covering our retirees. And as a result of that, we've been able to keep our, much less than other areas, we're projecting about a 4% increase in health insurance for. Moving on to retirement costs, we have, our employees are covered by pension plans. But I want to, I want to share with you, we're very lucky to be here in New York State, because the way our pension plans work in New York State, funded, and what that basically means, Don works for the school district, A, we contribute to his pension, but when Don retires, it's fully funded. Pensions after they leave, Cork State does a really good job of managing this, and I want to just give an example. Boy, their pension plans are funded about 38%. They're not only paying for active employees, but they're paying for retirees, and it's a real drag on the system programming and opportunities for kids. Salaries and wages, as I mentioned, we've negotiated all of our union contracts, so those are figured in. We're really good job managing energy costs, we, we're part of a thing called NISMIC. We enter into three-year supply agreements, so we can lock in our natural gas and electric costs. And we've done a really good job of that, and that helps us, helps us keep our costs in control. I mentioned when we started that this has been a challenging year for us in terms of balancing the budget because of inflation and, and our disappointing state aid. But, you know, I want to tell you some things we had to do. I mentioned the COVID funding. We have ensured that we're not continuing any expenses associated with COVID. So, we cut any of the positions and expenditures that were previously funded by ARP and CERSA funding. That was about 38 positions. Fiscally, I think it was a good thing for us to do, we, we eliminated 38 positions, but we did that substantially through retirements and attrition. So, what that means is that only three of our employees lost their job as a result of that. As a parent in the district, you might be worrying, wow, they eliminated 38 positions? What does that mean to my, my student and, and opportunities? We didn't cut any opportunities for kids. Our enrollment was down enough that we could, we could afford cutting classes or programming or opportunities for our students. We reduced, I talked about our healthcare. One of the things in those negotiations that our employees agreed to do for, for their healthcare, their contributions went up and will go up for each year of the contract. And so, employee contributions helped us subsidize the, the healthcare. We got some new pricing, we went out and did a complete RFP on our health insurance, and were able to drive out some of our prescription drug, drug costs. And, and our, our expenditures have been lower, as I mentioned, lower than expected for the last several years. But the final thing we did to balance our budget was we're using some of our reserves. Built up some reserves in TRS and ERS, and we're using dollars of reserves to balance the budget. Hope for next year is that we get a little more state aid, that we have more retirements, so we can take advantage of attrition, and that we have lower inflation. As I reported earlier, it looks like we're well on our way to more normalized inflation levels. So, this is our, this is, I'm sorry about that window, let me try to move. This is our expense budget, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna do something, I'm gonna advance the slide to just show you, the two largest pieces of the pie indicate, we're a people-based business. Do you see salaries and wages and benefits? That's where most of our costs are. And the single most important thing we do, put an adult in front of a child. And so, we're really focused on making sure that we have the best teachers, best programming for our kids. And we really work hard to control our costs in the back office. And when I say that, I mean, making sure that our M&amp;O, our maintenance and operations staff have good equipment, but we don't want to hire any more M&amp;O folks. We want to keep that staffing as low as we possibly can, so that we have student-facing employees. Same thing in our business office and any of our support functions, we're trying to make sure that our, our resources are focused on teachers, those that service students directly. But we're a people-based business, and now let's just jump into the numbers. Our salaries and wages are up 4.88%, and part of that is that with inflation, we were, we gave compensation. Our benefits, you see, are only up 2.49%, and that's because our employees are contributing more to their insurance as part of that negotiation. Our salaries are up a little higher than our increases, and that's because we've had an increase in our special needs population. And so, we're finding that we, we have more students with special needs, with IEPs, that require us to provide additional services. Like I pointed out on the, on the revenue side, the single biggest cost increase for us is our debt service. And that's though, the, the amount of debt associated with capital projects. And I want to point out two things on, on that. The first is that we get state aid for each of our projects, so the local taxpayer doesn't bear the majority of the costs of that debt service. The second thing is that because we are a highly rated credit, we're a very strong credit, we can borrow money at a very low cost of capital. And so, when we think about debt services, mostly principal payments, our debt, our interest expense is very low. And you can see, we, we spent a lot of money with BOSIS, and I want to just explain that for a minute. BOSIS is the Board of Cooperative Educational Services. So, what we're able to do is offer our students opportunities that, like, we couldn't do on our own. They have welding programs and a lot of different trades and healthcare and, and different STEM and other opportunities for kids that, it's really hard for one district to provide on their own. So, we work together with other districts, and we offer a course through BOSIS that our students can go to. And, and then our, our kids participate in that, and they have opportunities they wouldn't otherwise have. The other thing we do with BOSIS is we purchase a lot of services, like technology services, and we provide, we get a lot of software and, and special ed services through both. And again, we get special state aid, the state incents us to work together cooperatively. And they give us some additional aid. And our budget's a $224 million budget for next year. And some more pictures of our kids. I'd like to talk a little bit about transportation, and you've probably all heard about electric buses. I just want to let you know that North Syracuse is not buying any electric buses for next year. Legislative session, they were reevaluating what New York State's strategy was going to be for. So, what we're doing is, we're just doing, on every year, we're going to continue to buy gasoline buses, and I'll tell you more about that in detail. I, I want to make it clear, we're not against electric buses and, and the environmental initiatives, but we want to just make sure we can do it. A, and so, we've applied for NICERTA grants and EPA grants. We were waiting for some guidance from New York State program, and they've given that. And so, we're going to consider electric buses next year as part of our, as part of our bus purchases. But for this year, we're going to continue to buy, if you look at the first three bullet points, the proposal for buying buses, we're going to buy two 65-passenger buses that are going to be for our special needs students. And on the buses, we have wheelchair, air conditioning, so that we can, we can best support our students with special needs. We're going to buy eight gasoline buses, traditional 65-passenger buses. And this year is kind of a bit of an experiment, we're going to buy two buses that have a little larger gas tanks and have little luggage compartments underneath. And you might say, well, why would we do that? What that allows us to do is buses on longer field trips. We've had a lot of our sports teams and fine arts folks go on longer trips, and we want to make sure that we can get them there and back and, and transport them in the most efficient way. And again, that's, that's 12 buses, and that's what we've been buying every year. I'd say, well, hey, you said earlier that your enrollment was declining, why do you, why do you still need to buy 12 buses? Well, one of the reasons is, you might notice, we've got a lot of new housing developments throughout our district. And our buses, it, it ends up, it ends up, we look at the efficiency of our loading of our buses, but it ends up being the transit time that drives a lot. We triple-trip our kids. What that means is we use the entire fleet to go out and get the high school and the junior high, then that entire fleet goes out and gets both middle schools, and then that entire fleet goes out and does all six elementary schools. Applies the assets very well, and have to work within that schedule. And so, the other thing we have, and I just want to point this out, we have a, a thing that New York State does that I think is, is really wonderful, we, it's called the McKinney-Vento Law. And what that means is if a child becomes homeless, and they've lived in our district, they're one of our kids, but unfortunately, something happened in their family and they became homeless, and they've got to go live with grandma in Oswego. We will go every day and get that child in Oswego and bring him. Have, or their friends, right? Their, their teachers and their, their, their school community, that intact. Couple hundred kids a year, that requires us to have the fleet in order to do. Last thing I want to say about transportation, I had to run our buses for about 10 years. Don't want to have too many buses that are over 10 years old, because the frames start to rust out, the mechanics of transmissions and engines start to, oh, and those are really expensive. So, that's our goal, we, we don't have a lot of, you know, when you look at our fleet, it's, there's a lot of 10-year-old buses, and we're trying to, just when they get to 10 years old, we want to be able to replace them. We're also going to buy some M&amp;O vehicles. I mentioned earlier that we want to be very efficient with our maintenance and operations. And so, we found that by having larger mowers that go faster, with the blades spinning quicker, you know, we've had a lot of rain in the last week, if you haven't noticed. But that, that these, this equipment allows our guys to mow lawns when it's raining. These are great pieces of equipment. As a matter of fact, at our Gillette Road Athletic Complex, you guys all know what a Roomba vacuum is, we actually have a Husqvarna mower, that's a robotic mower, it just goes out and mows the fields. Impressive. And so, we're really trying to be good stewards of the. And so, this vehicle proposition is consistent with what we've done in the past. It's about a 0.13% impact on taxes and about a $2.41 cost on a $100,000 home, but four star. Our fund balance, so what's our fund balance? That's our savings account. Have about 4% in savings. And so, we have, we're projecting we'll, we'll have about 4.47% in savings next year in our fund balance. Reserves, and so, you might notice, the first thing on this thing, I want to bring your attention to our reserves going down from about 30 million to 26. And that's due to the fact that we're using some of our reserves to subsidize capital projects. And as I mentioned, all of our reserves to subsidize this year's budget. But I also want to point out, these reserves are for specific real liabilities we have, and I'm going to. But when people protest their assessment on their house, which we have nothing to do with, if they win taxes, but we can't go back out to the taxpayers and say, hey, we had to refund taxes for somebody, so everybody owes us a little bit more. So, what we do is protest their taxes, we establish a reserve, we work with our attorneys to do that, so that when those cases are settled, we don't have to cut student programming to settle up that case. Same thing with Corkman's Compensation, we're a people-based business, as I mentioned earlier. Got anywhere between 1,400 and 1,500 employees. Sometimes they get hurt on the job, and when they do, we make sure we put money away to cover their medical bills and any loss of use, and then have to pay to, for those. Those are the type of liabilities we make sure we have covered, our reserves. We're, we're in good shape, and that's what's allowed us to balance our budget this year by using $2 million. So, now I have to share with you the general budget, you just, is going to, general. Always, you'll get an opportunity to vote on that, you'll get an opportunity to vote on our buses, on our transportation proposition. And the third proposition that'll be on the ballot will be for our aquatics facility. We were processing building a pool, aquatics facility up at the senior high school. That facility is substantially funded by grants, and Al Sterpy, our assemblyman, was very generous. He was able to get us a $2 million grant for the pool. And unfortunately. And unfortunately, in this construction market, we realized that the budget was going to be in Al got us an additional $3 million in grant funding. So, there'll be $5 million of total grant funding on the pool. Like, that's, that's wonderful, we were so happy about that. Then we called our attorneys, and they said, yes, but you have to get the voters to approve your use of that $3 million for the pool. So, we're going to ask the voters, it'll have no tax impact, will you please let us use this $3 million grant to subsidize the cost of the pool? And we're hoping the voters approve that. If they don't approve that, we don't get the $3 million. The grant is specific for the pool. So, it's free money, and we'd like to make sure that we can function of the pool with that grant. So, we're hopeful that the, the voters will consider that positively on This is a great picture. This is Mike Marizio on the left, our board president, who's here in the audience, Al Sterpy, the, the gentleman I've been mentioning, our assemblyman, and our two swim coaches, Brad and Paul. That's, this is at the groundbreaking for the pool. What the pool's going to look like, and we're excited about it, not only because it'll be a good thing for our boys, men's, and women's swim team, and for our PE classes, but it's going to be a tremendous asset for the community. Sign, so that it'll have a separate entrance, separate locker rooms, so that probics and water safety instruction, and, and of open swimming for the community. But we think it's going to be a great asset for the community, as well as for, for our school. We're really lucky here in North Syracuse, Matty Dale Community, to have this gem of a, a public library, the Salina Library, and it's right on our Roxborough campus. So, we have our Roxborough Elementary and our Roxborough Middle School, and the Salina Library. And because of the size of our town, Salina is allowed to put their proposition on our ballot. So, while we have nothing to do with the running of the library, or the finances of the library, they are coming forward with a request to increase their budget modestly by $14,000 or 2.8%. And, and so you'll see that on the proposition if you're from the town of Salina. The vote and election is, is next Tuesday. If you live north of 481, you'll vote up at the Michael J. Bragman Stadium. If you live south of 481, you'll vote here at the Jerome Melville, Melvin Administrative Offices. And the, we, the polls are open from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and you can check with our district clerk, Jill Herrera, if you have any questions about your registration status. I'd like to open the floor up for questions if folks have any questions or comment. Far none, I, I would encourage you, if you think of any, if you have neighbors that are expressing any concerns or have questions, please don't hesitate to have them call me or Jill here in the district office, and we'll make sure they get their questions answered. Yes. Mind using the microphone there? Just push the little button.
My name is Alicia Wallace. I am a student at LeMoyne College, completing my Certified Advanced Study. I am a graduate of CNS in 1990. I went to Lake Shore, Gillette, North Syracuse Street High School, CNS, that I put my kids through. But I have a question, will they ever have another high school? Would there always be just Because I mean, it's, the population's just, like, it's growing.
Answer.
Okay.
Oh, yes. But, you know, we're, we're our, we're taking a look at our district configuration. We're going to be embarking in a utilization study, which has nothing to do with the school budget, you know, this year, but it could for years to come. And more to come about that at our June 2nd, yes, June 2nd is our next board meeting, and the consultant that we hired is going to come talk about the process of the utilization study. So, if you're interested in that. So, part of that is would, would and could be maybe a building reconfiguration or something of that nature. So, stay tuned. Thank you very much.